Okay, I think we'll go ahead and get started. A little after eight o'clock, I'm gonna ask Commissioner Goldman to give the invocation, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Miller. You please stand.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your goodness to us and for all the ways in which you provide. Thank you, Lord, for allowing us to come together and conduct the affairs of the citizens of Weatherford. I pray, Lord, that we would represent them well. Also, Lord, would like to invoke your guidance and your power as we go through this meeting, that each thing that we say and do will never bring dishonor to you. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll now call this meeting to order. First items of roll call.
Rick Miller.
Here.
Galen Vogt.
Here.
Warren Goldman.
Here.
Brian Wade.
Here.
Mike Brown.
Here. The next item on the agenda is a recognition of awards or achievements. Do we have anything we need to do? Don't think so. If not, we'll move to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Miller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Wade. Ashley.
Miller.
Aye.
Vogt.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consider recommendation of Hotel Motel Committee to approve a grant to the Heartland of American Museum in the amount of $21,920. Brian?
Good morning. Both the requests today are from the museums, and I don't know if you all remember, but the committee, a few years ago, came up with a formula where the museums were entitled to 10% of the previous five-year average from the proceeds. So, both of them did not exceed, so, well, $22,000 really was the 10%. So, that's, you'll see on the next one. So, that's, this is their yearly ask.
Okay. So, we've got a recommendation of the Hotel Motel Committee to approve a grant to the Heartland of American Museum in the amount of $21,920. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Goldman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Vogt. Any discussion? Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vogt.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye. The next item is consider recommendation of Hotel Motel Committee to approve a grant to the Stafford Air and Space Museum for billboard funding in the amount of $22,894.50.
That's...
Same thing?
Same thing.
All right. Got a recommendation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Vogt. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Goldman. Any discussion? Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vogt.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye. Brian, thank you for the work that your committee does. I know that that's not an easy decision. I know we've got, you know, budget, a lot of budget cuts, but just double your salary. How about that? Appreciate you, Arvel.
Thank you. James is on the committee.
Yeah, James is on there, and Rick, so appreciate, appreciate what you do. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing on the proposed 2017 budget for the city of Weatherford. Dana, the city treasurer, will make that report.
Okay, you have, the budget in the spiral is before we made the final change yesterday in the city attorney's department. Otherwise, everything's the same. We have cut sales tax revenue estimates next year by 10%. We have raised health insurance premiums by 10%. We've raised Blaine County. We're gonna do dispatching for Blaine County, so you'll see four additional employees in the police department, and then we're getting additional 911 revenue for that. Do you have any questions about anything? I made the changes as requested by the commission in the budget workshop that we had last month.
So those changes are reflected in the, in the report?
Yes.
How many changes were those? About six? Five, six?
I'd like to say thank you to Dana, you and all the rest of the city staff for working hard with us on this budget, 'cause it looks like we're in the positive, or at least a break even on each one of the funds. So, thank you. Thank all of you guys for all the work.
All the department heads and you guys, Dana, Ashley, everyone involved. You've done a good job.
The department heads do a great job of following and helping and offering to help and stay within their budgets. They've done a great job.
I would like to make an additional comment to the department heads, to pass on to the people that work for them, that we appreciate the willingness all the way down line to work with the city. I know that there's a lot of people that could use a little extra money, but you guys, thank your staff for making those concessions. It's not an easy process for you to carry out, nor is it for the guys sitting behind the table. So, just thank the guys all the way down and down, that we appreciate that, working with the city on that.
Do we have any other comments or questions for Dana? I know, of course, by having the workshop, I think we were able to go line by line on each one of the items and come up with, you know, what we felt like was the best interest of the, of the city. Any other questions from the commissioners?
Out of those five, six items that were debatable and that were taken care of and changing today, one of them was that ADA. Was that $50,000 limit or $25,000 limit?
We ended up lowering that down. You know, we originally talked about $50,000, had visited with Joy, yeah, Joy was back in the back, about what, you know, was necessary. I told her that, you know, we were trying to, you know, get that broke down the best we could. She identified $25,000 as what she felt like would still keep us within the guidelines. Joy, you can make any other comments you'd like, but that's, you know, I didn't twist her on too bad, but, you know, we feel like that we're still doing the things that we need to do to comply with ADA, so we lowered it from 50 to 25,000.
Okay.
And I thought that was, you know, a positive thing in the sense of the budget, you know, while it's not positive in the sense of what we want to do.
Yeah.
It was positive in the sense of budget. So, we're just having to squeeze everything we can right now.
Despite the city attorney and the ADA, can you name the other ones that we were discussing?
Sure.
Just for the public record.
The, I didn't bring my list in, but, go ahead Dana, can you think of them? I'll have to think about this.
Yes, we added Dawson Field Lights and scoreboards for $86,000.
Another thing that we had, we did, you know, we had a request for new vehicles. We ended up approving $15,000 for two new pick, two used pickups, $15,000. I think that came out of Public Works, didn't it Dana?
Yes.
Two pickups at $15,000. You know, we had, had a lot of requests, but we didn't, didn't approve, just necessity. So, I think we've got two pickups there. I was trying to, trying to think.
Really with the reduction from the ADA, everything's pretty much, I think, what the commission had in the budget meeting.
I just wanted to make sure, put it on an open...
Yeah.
Everything was pretty much...
You authorized for the police department to add that patrol car that they lost.
Right.
That they really need to replace, and they said, "Put it in next year's budget because they can't get it here by the end of this year." And statute requires that we receive the goods and services before we pay for them, and they can't get it here by the end of December.
Okay. You know, some of the other cuts that we had this year that, you know, we just felt like that we needed to make some changes was, you know, several years ago, we eliminated a position up here that we had somebody that did the custodial work. We contracted out for 2017. We'll just be doing that ourselves as far as the cleaning up here. It wasn't a big deal, about $10,000 a year, but took that out. We'll also be, you know, we've been doing work on our flower beds down on Main Street. We'll be holding off on that for a while, and we'll have people that are doing community service that will continue to work on that. But, you know, just trying to cut anywhere we can. I mean, it's not, not big, high-dollar amounts, but on the other hand, you know, $10,000 here, $25,000 there adds up. And I didn't bring my list. What else was there Dana?
We eliminated the $12,000 annually to the chamber. We eliminated Blackboard Connect, or I cut it down to half, but I believe we're gonna eliminate that.
We also eliminated the money that we give to the Economic Development Foundation. We give them $6,000 a year. We eliminated that. The $12,000 that the chamber received was for promotion of Weatherford. They're now coming to Hotel Motel for most of their requests, and we thought, and they were agreeable. We talked to them beforehand, and they were certainly agreeable to that, you know, under the circumstances. Let's see here. Anybody else think of things to talk about? I didn't bring my list.
I know. We talked about six or seven. I wrote them down.
Yeah, right.
I got two in my head. That's why I asked about this whole thing.
On a positive note, unlike other cities, we did not have to eliminate personnel. We've had some retirements, and we have future retirement that we're not gonna replace, so we've got that additional.
We didn't, we didn't do raises this year, but we were able to continue the longevity pay that we have for the employees, which, you know, I think's rewarding them for years of service, and, you know, several years ago started doing that here, you know, in this November check that kind of helps them through the Christmas time, so that's been, I think, continued to be positive. So, other questions or comments concerning the budget? Oh, Bonnie?
Yes, in the workshop under excluded items, there was discussion about the padels for the fire department. They talked about maybe re-putting $5,000 back in that. Did that happen?
Yes.
Yeah.
We actually put, what, half of that back in because they said that they could...
Do the work.
The firemen said they could do the work and do it for a better price than that. So, you know, the fire chief got back with us and told us that, so, you know, even, even that got, even though we wanted it in there, we, that got tweaked too, so.
I just had one other question. Are you confident that cutting things 10% is enough? You know, the regional federal reserve out of Kansas City is predicting a very slow recovery, not until the third quarter of 2017.
Yeah, we think that we're being conservative. You know, last year, we cut 5%. There were several that wanted to go 10%. We settled on 5, and it looks like we'll end up being down about 8% for the year. You know, I think that our sales tax revenue is trending the right way. We were down about 2% this last month. So, you know, I think 10% is gonna be adequate, and I think the rest of the commission, you know, felt like that, you know, that's where we need to be. The good thing about the city government, you know, we can adjust month to month. You know, if we need to, you know, do some things to make some cuts, we see that it is, you know, trending that 15% or whatever, then, you know, these girls, they keep an eye on it, Ashley and Dana, and, you know, they'll, they'll let us know pretty quick that, you know, we need to cut back. So, I think, I think we're in a good spot.
We've actually cut 10% off of this year's 5% down, so we're actually, we're 15% cut from the year before, and we've had to cut quite a bit of capital to stay within statute.
See, the plan last year at the budget meeting was that if we had some capital purchases in there, but if, as a year, we were trying to push those back further in the year, and so the mayor could make those purchases if the money was there, and I feel like we got through the year in pretty good shape.
Other comments or questions? Yes, sir, Jim.
What is that action about the water line relocation?
Yeah.
Is there any...
No, basically, you know, all we've done over there, you're talking about across the street, the Ford dealership?
Highway 54.
Oh, the Highway 54. We actually met yesterday on that. Dana and Chuck had been in contact with Department Transportation. That project, we don't think will happen until 2019. Well, actually, I think the project itself will be 2021, but they've gotta have everything done by 2019. So, we originally had, oh, I think we still have it in there, $300,000 set aside for that project. We don't think that we're gonna, you know, do anything this year in 2017. Same way on Lyle Road. You know, we've been talking with Department Transportation concerning a couple of grants. You know, there's two $1 million grants plus one for $500,000. You know, we're trying to get in position to be able to have our 20% match or what, not 20%, excuse, scratch that, on Lyle Road, there's not a match, but we, I think Phase One of Lyle Road is 1.7 million. We can get $1 million in grant, and so we're trying to basically save up the $700,000 to do, do that phase. So, you know, we're just, everything's pushed back a little bit, but we don't think that we're gonna have anything on Highway 54 until 2019, and then hopefully in the next couple of years, you know, Lyle Road. So, Dana, you might also mention, I know you, I don't know if you have a copy of it here, but, you know, kind of breakdown of the investments, you know, and kind of where we stand. I don't know if you were gonna cover that. You might just...
I gave you your monthly financial reports, and I also gave you a report of investments. And this month, to keep general fund from going in the hole, I surrendered a CD, and by Crawford and Associates CPA's standards, we should always keep at least 30% in our reserves.
30 or 20?
20 at minimum.
Yeah.
They would like us to have 30%. And so, and that's of our annual revenue, and general fund revenue is about $10 million, so we shouldn't go below $2 million in reserves at minimum. And so, we're right there. We've got $2,878 invested right now for general fund, and we need between $2 and $3 million in there. I'm just letting you know that so that you know we're close.
Keep pushing in for the 30%. I'd like to also say, you mentioned the grants, and I think our staff throughout the city, in all departments, do a very good job at looking for grants. There's a lot of grants out there, and sometimes we do have to postpone projects, but we're doing it. I think we do a very good job of finding those grants.
Other comments concerning the financial status of the city or the budget for 2017? Bonnie?
If I have a question about the moving the lines on 54.
Uh-huh.
In the workshops, there was some discussion about because maybe that is outside the city limits.
Right.
That you might be charging some of the residents out there?
Well, now, I mean, yeah, we'd like to, but I don't think we're, I don't think we're gonna be able to, you know, do that. It's just, that was an agreement years ago that, when we ran that water line out to, what's the addition, Clover Lane or Friendly Acres?
Yeah.
And unfortunately, the water line was put in the right of way, and so that's at our, our expense. You know, ODOT is doing the project. If it was on, you know, I-40 or, you know, they'd be responsible for the, the project, but, you know, that's, actually falls back to us, and, you know, we're trying to put it off as long as we can. But no, we'll probably end up, you know, absorbing that, that cost. So, other comments or questions concerning the 2017 budget? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the budget as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Miller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Wade. Any other discussion? Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vogt.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye. Okay, the, thank you Dana, very much, appreciate it. Okay, the next item on the agenda, let's see here, is the commission meeting dates. Is that right? We don't have a, we're good. Okay. The public hearings and resolutions, we're good. The next item is consider city commission dates for 2017. We've had a little bit of discussion on this and all that Ashley talked about. Go ahead, Ashley.
In your packet, I gave you a list of the scheduled meeting dates. As you can see, we did make an adjustment from 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM to help with our new commissioner, Garrett Smith, trying to make the meetings. Is there problems with 4 o'clock? Can everybody make it at that time? Do we need to look at another time?
Why don't you make it at 6?
Okay. I think maybe that was the, I know, I talked to Warren, and, you know, the, about the possibility of 6 o'clock maybe fit your schedule.
For me, I'm glad you brought that up, 'cause for me, it's easier for me to plan the beginning of my day, but the end of my day is, is not real specific, and so it's hard for me to do something before 6:00. So, 6:00 or 6:30 would work for me.
So, 6 o'clock on Fridays, you know, people have sports events, we're traveling and stuff. Wednesdays is church events in the evenings. Do we wanna look at like Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays? What do you guys think?
Yeah, I think that'd make more sense, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday. Get away from Wednesday night church and also people that are leaving for the weekend on a Friday. We've always traditionally done it on a Friday, Friday evening. Yeah, Tony?
I need to hear Paul's answer.
Okay. Tuesday and Thursday, this is the, so, I mean, I don't have a problem with, we're gonna meet the last week of the month, so, you know, we might look at Tuesday and Thursdays at 6 o'clock.
Only wish we did this three years ago.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, you know, we've had, we've had meetings in the evening before, you know, we, it's, it's 50/50. We have about the same attendance both, both ways, but anyway. Rick, you good with 6 o'clock or...
I can make any time work. I just, I thought about maybe 5:30, if that'd help our staff as far as, you know, keeping them in even, but, I mean, whatever.
It'd be, I might miss a few meetings, you know, doing it at 5:30, 'cause normally, my workday, if I plan ahead well, I can get, be places for sure usually by 6:00, but if I run into obstacles, especially when I'm working out of town, I may not get home until 8 or 9 o'clock, so.
Okay. Well, could we maybe table this next month, and how can we do it?
I can go ahead, and I have to have it posted by the 15th, so I can go ahead and make the adjustments.
Okay, so Tuesdays and Thursdays and 6 o'clock? Yeah?
6 or 5:00.
If we have, I'm out, so it doesn't matter to me. How will that affect payroll?
Well, you know, our department heads, most of them are, you know, exempt employees, so it's not going to affect them. Now, we do have a handful in here, you know, Lisa, Joy, you know, Max, Mark. I mean, there's, there's several that will actually, if, if they attend, you know, would have to pay them overtime or comp time on there, so that, that was one of the reasons we always try to keep it between 8 and 5, but, you know, just to avoid that. But there are, not every situation where every department head has to be here, but, you know, on the other hand, we do like, like them being here just in case there's questions, but, so 6 o'clock? Okay, on Tuesdays and Thursdays?
I can make, make whatever.
Which side, Warren? Okay.
So, 6 on Tuesdays or Thursdays, I guess?
Yeah.
So, I'll rework this up and send it to everybody.
Okay. Do the dates, any dates, a problem with anybody that you know of on there? Okay, I guess we just need a motion to adjust the, the time and the scheduled meeting dates. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Goldman. Do we have a second? Second by Miller. Any discussion? Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vogt.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye. Okay. The next item on the agenda is consider revise inter-local government cooperation agreement between the city of Weatherford and the town of Hydro. For Weatherford is contracted with Lifeguard Ambulance Service to provide ambulance service for the Weatherford and Hydro areas, and Hydro agrees to collect and pay Weatherford a monthly ambulance fee. Ashley?
This is the same thing that we approved last month with Korn and Hydro. Basically, Hydro's attorney took our agreement, made it a little bit more descriptive, kind of put it into a resolution-type format, and they want us to approve this agreement. It all looks, it basically says the same thing as ours, so we're good with it. We just need to approve it again.
Okay, we have a motion to approve that inter-local agreement between the town of Hydro and city of Weatherford?
So moved.
So moved by Vogt. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Wade. Any discussion? Dave, you good?
It's good.
Okay. Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vogt.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
Aye. Next item to discuss is consider amending Chapter 20, Article 12, Section 121 of the Weatherford Municipal Code regarding ambulance service fee, participation from all multi-unit apartment buildings to fund emergency medical service for the citizens of Weatherford. Commissioners take actions necessary. Ashley?
Okay, this is, the multi-units have come up just from doing all the ambulance changes and stuff. Every city or citizen of the city of Weatherford has to pay the ambulance fee. The multi-units are the only ones that, per the code, are able to opt out, and looking back at everything, we feel like, well, we wanted to bring this to you guys to kind of look at it and decide on it, but we have 462 units. It's 36 multi-unit apartments, which a multi-unit apartment is basically an apartment that has two, three, four units attached to it, but it's all under one water meter. So, they have to pay, when they get their water bill, they get, they have to pay the one large lump sum of water. The sewer is based on how many units they have, so if there's three units, it's three sewer charges, three garbage charges, and we feel like they need to pay the ambulance charge too. So, if there's three units, it'd be three ambulance fees. Basically, if, you know, take Maple Town Homes, they're on here, if they have to have an ambulance service, our ambulance comes out, you know, this is, we feel this, you know, Weatherford provides the ambulance, we provide the sewer, we provide the garbage, they have to pay all that. We feel like they need to pay the ambulance fee also. The reason why they're able to opt out is vacancy purposes. They feel like if it's vacant, they shouldn't have to pay an ambulance fee when there's nobody there. However, if it's vacant, they still have to pay the sewer and the garbage, so anyways, we wanna bring it to you guys to kind of decide on it, and if we do decide, we would like for them to come in also, because currently, I also gave you a spreadsheet on the EMS service charges, and with Weatherford, Hydro, and Korn, we're still short $16,866. If we bring in the multi-units, that will cover the subsidy. If we don't, we're gonna have to take the remaining amount that we owe to them out of, I guess, the lease that they pay us, which we really don't want to. We would like the lease to kind of be on its own and just be an extra source of revenue for us. If we do, if you guys do decide to make them pay, we'll have to do an ordinance on it to amend the code, and we can bring that next month, so.
Does this include any condominiums that are single meter?
It's, it's every single meter we have, so if there's two units, three units...
Do they all opt out? All the singles?
We actually have five that are paying right now. We actually have five that are paying right now. So, we have five apartments paying, there's fourteen units paying out of the 462 units.
And I appreciate Ashley putting together kind of the, the service charge, you know, what the service charge is going to be and what, you know, what we're going to collect, you know, in there. And that's, you know, like last month, we talked about the nursing homes had opted out previously. They're now going to be included. They're going to collect, just like the residential is. You know, there's, there's pros and cons to the, you know, I know that we've had people who've talked about the efficiency apartments, that, you know, that's an extra five dollars and fifty cents per, you know, per unit that somebody's going to have to pay if the owner or the person living there. So, we want to bring that up for consideration and to talk it out, to see. I mean, we think we're okay either way we go. You know, we, we just have to take the money out of, you know, the rental agreement that we get from Life Guard for the old fire station. So, comments, questions? Tony?
I believe the city of Cleveland already charged them for their contract for those things.
Yeah, I think, I think they do too. Well, they, I think they're from the gig go. They've always had their, you know, nursing homes, the apartments, you know, that part of it. So, right, right.
Now, is this list, a list of everyone that would be affected?
Mm-hmm.
Does it have the people that are already on there? Is that what the little stars are or asterisks?
Those five that are paying? Does that, you said there are five that are...
Yeah, there's five paying.
Are they the ones, are they marked on there?
Friendly Apartments, it's, I don't think it's marked on yours. Brand Horse has two. Top Fest has two. And if they're paying, I mean, it's, it's, every unit has to pay. And basically, we would like to do this because we, you know, it's, again, it's a service the city's providing. We feel like everybody has to participate since ninety percent of the citizens are.
So, if a unit is empty, and the owner, who pays then?
These, the multi-units are usually in the owner's name. And so, the owner just, however, takes it out of the rent or...
If it's vacant, the owner would pay it. If it's vacant, the owner, the owner of the apartments would pay it. And that's one of the questions we've had in the past. You know, if, if occupancy is low, then, you know, maybe they're paying for something that, you know, they're, they're not going to benefit for. So, that's, that's been the argument.
I know that, you know, some of the efficiency apartments, you know, if he, if he doesn't have the option of renegotiating, the landlord doesn't have the option of renegotiating the rent, that's, you know, that's going to be quite a hit.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think, I'm open to it. I just think that maybe we ought to put it on the agenda next time, let people discuss if it'll be affected.
Okay. Other comments?
Well, I guess if that would be the case, we could also, if we decided we wanted to do it, delay implementation for a period of time so that all the...
That's a good idea.
Owners could make plans and...
August of next year, August or September, you know, one of those type of things. That's a good idea, Rick.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, but I guess. So, maybe just table that until next month, give people time to...
That'd be a good idea.
I think it would. I mean, I think it would. It seems like we should, but I don't really, you know, I'm, you know, don't want to strap something on landlords that...
Right.
But I think it's fair to go ahead and do it, but...
Okay. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, a motion to table until next month. By Goldman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Miller. Any other discussion? Bonnie?
I just have a question. It's a moot point, but we pay Life Guard three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we pay signor the subsidy?
We did. Actually, we, we paid them about, I don't know exactly what it was, but about two hundred and forty thousand dollars last year. We, we paid it per active water meter last year, four dollars and fifty cents. So, per, you know, per household that participated. So, it ended up, it was a little less than twenty thousand dollars a month is what we paid them. And like I said, there were several changes that were going to be happening this year, whether we stayed with signer or made the change. And that's why we had a committee that looked at it for several months trying to determine. But it's, it's going to be more than what we paid signer last year. Other comments? Okay, we've got a motion, second. Ashley?
Miller?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. The next item on the agenda is consider property abatements. Dave?
Good morning, Mayor Council. It's pretty, pretty slim this month, fortunately. We'll go through the first one, A, 320 North Kansas. They had mowed. They called last night, they finished mowing. These are not, these are the pictures of the only one, only one we're going to have. But we need to go through 320 North Kansas first.
Okay, so 320 North Kansas taken care of?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so no action to be taken at this point? No recommendations?
Action.
Okay. Next?
And next one is B, that's the pictures you're seeing. This is a property up here on the corner, it's 622 West Tom Stafford, corner of Tom Stafford and Fourth Street. We can't really do anything about the pickup sitting there, the way our code reads. But the brush along this fence line, it's around that trailer, around the old garage that's there, I'd like to see that cleaned up. Tree limbs laying around here and back behind the pickup and over here in the corner, I'd like to see that cleaned up. The property owner mowed last week or so, and, you know, he's always mowed, but he doesn't finish up the job, the way I look at it. So, I would like to go ahead and abate it so where we can get the tree limbs out of there, the brush out of there that hadn't been taken care of.
Okay. Got a recommendation to abate 622 West Tom Stafford. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Goldman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Miller. Any discussion? Ashley?
Miller?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
And C, 918 West Proctor, he did come in and mow, mow his backyard. We don't have a picture of it. It's clean.
Okay, so no action. All right, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is consider resignation of Mindy Burgess and appointing Vicki Ralph to the Weatherford local library advisory board. She's agreed to do that. So, do we have a motion to appoint Vicki Ralph to the library board?
So moved.
So moved by Goldman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Miller. Any discussion? Ashley?
Miller?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Next item on the agenda is consider ordinance 2016 dash oh four, amending chapter eight of the Weatherford Fire Prevention Code for adoption of the 2015 edition of the National Fire Protection Association Code. Chief Carlin?
Good morning. This is basically bringing us up to the current code. This brings us up in line with what the state, the O U B C C and the state fire marshals, the codes that they currently have adopted, bringing us from 2009 edition up to the 2015.
Okay. Got a recommendation to amend chapter eight of the Weatherford Fire Prevention Code and adoption of the 2015 edition of the National Fire Protection. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Miller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Wade. Discussion?
Question. Can you briefly give what the changes or updates, you know, in the, in the short form? Are there highlights?
I don't have a whole list of, of all of the changes, but basically, there's not a lot of changes in the, in the fifteen. Can't think of anything standout, Bob. Can you, from the 2009, really, there's not much major change. There's some tweaking.
Any clues?
Yeah, oh, yeah, I understand. But, but really, we, in researching everything, we didn't see much, much changes in the fire code side.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay, we've got a motion, second. Ashley?
Miller?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Next item is consider emergency clause for ordinance 2016 dash oh four. Do we have a motion to do the emergency clause?
So moved.
So moved by Miller. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Wade. Any discussion? Ashley?
Miller?
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye. Next item is consider ordinance 2016 dash oh five, amending chapter four, article one of the Building Construction Code for adoption for the 2015 International Residential Code. Bob?
Just to bring us in line with what the state has adopted, and what they adopt is a minimum code statewide. We're looking at, I think the agenda says the International Residential Code. That code covers one- and two-family dwellings and townhouses completely. The construction, wiring, mechanical, plumbing, it's all in that one code. But we're also looking at the, the rest of the codes on the 2015 additions, which takes care of everything else. We've got a stack of books about this taller. But these, these are all adopted by the state of Oklahoma.
Okay. Got a recommendation to amend chapter four, article one of the Building Construction Code for adoption of 2015 International Residential Code. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Miller. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Um, Bob and I have talked about this, but these, these codes, especially international, become more and more intrusive. And does this also include the National Electric Code or we move away from that?
Yes.
Boeck of plumbing? Or any of those?
It includes the 2014 edition of the N E C.
Okay.
And that will probably be the biggest issue of all the changes in it, as Warren will note, but going to the classes on it. It involves a different type of breaker for almost everything in the house, which is called an arc fault breaker, that this breaker senses arcs in the circuit or in an appliance that's plugged into the circuit and trips the breaker if, if there's arcing taking place.
And that moves us from about a two dollar and fifty cent breaker to a sixty-eight to eighty-nine dollar breaker for every space in the breaker box.
Well, the arc fault was introduced...
And we also have to have combination plugs and breakers that have arc fault and G F C I now.
Yes, in certain instances, yes.
Question. What happens if we don't adopt it?
If we don't adopt it, Bob, I guess we just fall back to the 2009?
That's, no, we'll go back to the, yeah, 2008 on the, the N E C is what we have under right now.
Okay. And I think you've got, it's listed there, you know, as far as the electrical code, plumbing code, mechanical code, you know, kind of all-inclusive. So, other comments, questions? Tony?
If you don't adopt it, does it jeopardize any grants in any way?
You know, Bob, if you don't, if you don't adopt it, what are the consequences?
Well, in case there are court actions, the, we go to court over an issue with, that's, we're not adopting the new code, and David is the attorney would say, well, what's the code you're under here? And I said, well, we're under 2008 N E C. Well, that's not the code that's adopted by the state. So, I can see issues with that. The arc fault was introduced several years back. We had to do it, the only place we had to do it was in the bedrooms. And they've advanced, advanced, advanced. Now, basically, everything in the house, the half the arc fault protection on all circuits in the house, except the bathrooms and garage, maybe.
Bob, not to get ahead of ourselves here, but, you know, if we approve this and then we do the emergency clause, which makes it go into effect immediately, what's that do to all the homes that are being built right now?
Anything that's planned after this goes into effect would have to, would be under it. Anything that was, we've got it on the books now, they would not have to do any changing of.
Okay.
I mean, if, if, if we're adopting this, well, I'd sure like to see it go into effect down the road a little bit to give people that are bidding jobs, you know, a chance to get on the same page, because this could really...
I wish you could change the effective date of it.
Okay. The first item is the, oh, Bonnie, go ahead.
So, if you adopt this, how does it affect somebody, say, that's not in your home under construction?
A lot more than that.
Or a current house, if somebody's going to buy it, and they have it inspected, and it doesn't have this, will that have to be changed?
If, if you're buying a house that was wired under an existing code and it's still there and there's no changes to it, you don't have to do anything to it.
So, it's only for new construction?
If it's no, if you go in and start remodeling, then it gets into a different deal, if you rewire or something like that, yes. But existing stuff, it was put under a legally adopted code, you don't have to change anything.
Yeah, Joy, do you have a question? Or comment?
Well, I have a comment. I'm working with an engineer and architect on a, on a really big building.
Yeah.
And, you know, knowing that the state is to adopt the 2015, we told them, the state is not going to do it. And so, they are designing this real big, real big standard.
Right.
Plus, the state is also going to say, why isn't you add this code?
Right.
If we don't adopt it.
Good.
And it's going to affect anybody that is, we should have heard it after we did that today.
Good. Good. Other comments? Okay, the...
Well, we're saying, if we adopt it, we want to wait, I mean, make it effective like two months or whatever. I mean, I don't know, I'm asking if that's what we're talking here.
If we did it, say, the first of the year, you know, I think that would be better.
Okay. Tony?
You can't do that, you can't act what's published. You know, emergency clause, unless you're in public. So, you have thirty days of waiting to publish it. You can't do that.
We're going to do that at a work set a date, I guess, yeah.
I mean, this, this new code is pushing a lot, every one of these pushes prices up, you know, for, it's kind of like, we're going to end up like Europe, where knowing young couples can't afford a house, you know, you're going to be living in the back room of mom and dad's house if mom and dad could afford one. But just that one little thing we talked about, that's about, pushes the price up two thousand or more, just for the panel, for the breakers in the panel.
Yeah, I understand the, the money issue, but there's also the safety issue. And I think, I have personally seen two different places where I think if they had the arc fault breakers in, they would not have had a fire in the house. But...
And, you know, we can, there, there's two camps philosophies. One is that more government, more regulation is going to protect you from yourself. And, you know, I'm one of those people that doesn't believe that you should bubble wrap your kids and send them to school. And I feel like that some of these codes were getting to that point. It should be a decision of the, of the property owner as to, you know, these things are available It should be a decision of the, of the property owner as to, you know, these things are available if they wish to spend money for it. But, you know, I'm probably the minority, so.
Well, not really. We just had an awesome national election that says the opposite, so we want less government, less regulation as a whole, so. Just a bit there.
Other comments? We've got a recommendation to amend Chapter 4, Article 1 of the Building and Construction Code for adoption of 2015 International Residential Code. Do we have a motion to approve? Okay, we've got a motion, okay. Any other discussion? Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman.
Upstayed.
Wade.
No.
Brown.
All right, so it fails. Yeah, so that takes away item 14. Just a comment, Dave, anything, you know, from, that you can think of from a legal standpoint as far as to bring that back up at another time, you know, as far as updating the code?
It can be brought up any time.
Yeah, okay, sounds good. All right, appreciate that.
The officers do it.
Yep, thank you. Okay, any other comments concerning the City of Weatherford? If not, we'll move over to the Weatherford Public Works Authority. The first item on the Public Works Authority is the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So moved by Miller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Goldman, Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
All right. The next item is public hearing going to propose 2017 budget for the Weatherford Public Works Authority. Dan, anything additional concerning Weatherford Public Works?
No.
Okay. You've heard the presentation during the City of Weatherford budget, or the hearing for the budget. Any questions concerning Weatherford Public Works? Very none, do we have a motion to approve the budget for the Weatherford Public Works Authority?
So moved.
So moved by Goldman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by vote, any discussion? Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
All right. Next item on the agenda is consider proposed 2017 utility rate schedule. Ashley?
I gave you the proposed utility rates. Basically, we're looking at doing a 20 cent increase for water, which would start at the second year, so that would not affect the minimum bill. And then we're looking at doing a 50 cent increase on the garbage and the dollar for the EMS fee. The 50 cent for the garbage is because Republic Services is going up, so, and I also put that in your packet, they're going up $1.90 per ton. So we don't want to do increases, obviously. However, we have to, this is a business for us, so. And the minimum bill would go up $1.50 for the dollar on the EMS and the 50 cent on the garbage, so the minimum would go up to $58. On the water, the 20 cent increase, on an average of 8,000 gallons, it would probably bring in $72,000, so it's not really going to do a dent really, but it, every bit helps, so.
Do, are there any other companies that bid to do the garbage, like ambulance service?
Yeah, you know, we haven't bid it in several years. I know there is, Ken, there's Waste Connections.
Waste Management.
Waste Management. There are two or three other companies that do that. We, you know, and probably something, you know, we pay them about half a million dollars a year right now.
Is that something, is that something we could still do? Are we renewing contract right now?
Well, actually, this isn't renewing the contract. With, you know, they've sent us, you know, they have a CPI, you know, adjustment every year, but we're not, I can't even think, what is the contract with?
I don't know if we have one.
I don't remember. Tony, you remember?
There's a contract, I don't remember the name of the company, it's been carried for forever.
Alloyed waste.
Used to ally.
Waste management with Republic Services.
Yeah.
On the transfer.
Right.
And that's where your big cost savings is, is they have a transfer station here. So I didn't bid it, but I would be interested.
I think probably it's something we ought to take a look at, hadn't looked at it, you know, for a long time. And, I mean, I think Republic's done a good job, but same thing, we could be paying, paying more than what we, you know, what we need to. And Tony brings up a good point. I know the transfer station is a key to it, but, you know, still. And I'll just make the comment, you know, I think that on any of these adjustments, we're just trying to break even. We're not trying to, you know, trying to keep from having to subsidize, you know, the water, sewer, garbage. So that's, that's been the key too. And I know that Ashley's had that on her mind as far as trying to just figure out, you know, what to do. Dan?
I just have a comment.
Okay.
Just so you know, PWA has bond debt, and by the bond indenture, we're required to keep the net revenues at 125% to satisfy the bonds too, is another reason for this. And then we've also got things looming out there in the future, which is Highway 54 water line move. We still have the Ford lot drainage over here. We have Lowell Road drainage. And then, like Ashley said, Republic's going up on their rates.
Other comments, questions? Very none, do we have a motion to approve the utility rate schedule as presented?
So moved.
So moved by Goldman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Miller, any discussion? Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
All right. Next item is consider PWA Board Director's meeting dates for 2017. That would fall in the same as the City of Weatherford, so I guess we just need a?
Same adjustments.
Motion to make the same adjustments for 2017. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Goldman, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by vote, any discussion? Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
All right. Any other comments from the audience? Any comments from the commission?
I'd just like to make a comment on our, you're retaining the wall over there. It's all painted, it all looks so good. And I appreciate whoever did that. It greatly enhanced the curb appeal of property.
Well, we had Trent and his bunch painted the wall and got the grass going and growing, and then Kimball's bunch put the millings around the edge, so, and they're building a, it looks like it's done, a fence up on top there where somebody coming off the street, so, you know, I appreciate the comment.
Yeah, it looks good.
Okay. Anything else? Bonnie?
The Christmas lights look great. I hope these were covered down Main Street, but during Christmas, my mom and dad are there, I just can't help it.
Well, thank you for the positive comment. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved by Miller, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Goldman, Ashley?
Miller.
Aye.
Vote.
Aye.
Goldman.
Aye.
Wade.
Aye.
Brown.
All right. Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't think I was, I had to abstain because I had too much interest in that one.